Excel.
Make sure.
Rob, we're not on camera, right?
Keep closing.
What the hell's council doing?
Usually they go out at eight to nine and then Tuesday here it's like started early. When you were live.
It says on air. Says on air.
Okay. Alright, well at least we're not on camera anyways. You look stuck Alex.
It's a good room.
Yeah, this is a lot roomier.
Ryan. You, you can take yours in and get a reenbroiler. They'll take that stitch off and put the new one on.
Oh.
We just gotta. Um, Caitlin has, okay, I was named in town. So I'm gonna take much of mine in and pull all this tissue. So they can just keep it.
Yeah, I'm wondering why, yeah. Well, obviously.
Different it is if you can see that patch.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I had a couple of like nice items in my bowl and I'd like to.
That's a pretty generic.
Mine all strong.
We're gonna find out.
Something similar. Yeah, they were still probably alive, they were piping over.
The radio.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like my kids just love it.
I lost it, I would have lost it.
I lost the piece.
Yeah, it was, we did a great job on it. The panel there, they were, they were inundated. Did you go up there?
I didn't, but I did.
That is so great. Yeah, they were all in their like full, one of, one weave.
Yeah.
That's which was. Oh my god. That is great. That's not the end, they were all.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh yeah, they were all done though with that and it was so bad. I could not believe it, like that might. Wrapped in a center all around. We got. And yeah. Yeah. I know, is it the winter right now? I think well Saturday night, we even saw people. We had good weather this last weekend, weekend before, yeah, we called on Friday. So bad, so thankfully it was awesome weather they had. Yeah, it was lovely, my kids just loved it, I loved it.
Yes, I love it.
Yeah.
As much as I say.
Parrotless.
Yeah, we didn't see that office.
Did you? Yeah, I, I tried to. I bet they sort of like. Not happening, I'm like, sorry kids, we'll find. Yeah, but I'll be around tomorrow or you'll come meeting at ten and I'll be down.
I'll see, I, my.
Oh, so that's your position? Yeah. Oh yeah, you're funny, so you're here for something, that's perfect. What, I said you look, don't worry about your hair, you're a red sandwich.
Yeah, I already got one.
Right.
You going out Thursday?
I'm gonna take you home. He doesn't get it. For this, he's on the same tour. For the same tour.
He went from Santa, Santa himself.
Right, yeah, well what about the two? No, 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 not the two, I'll get something.
What's our top food?
No, you are just. Yes.
Oh, last year.
Yeah.
These three are.
And Russ is an L. It's not me, it's for us now.
No.
You have to either, you lose. Now I'm worried about it.
Essentially, it's.
That's what we had on tour. Last year.
That's not.
I wasn't a cop.
He also had a. Still has a mask underneath that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's. Yeah, from the, from the tower. Okay, this camera doesn't go on, you got Tyler who gives behind you here. Yeah. You should, there's our Santa. You can be Santa for us.
Yeah. And then the guy's.
Good job. Okay. Alright, that's on that. Look at my son, look at him. But I'm not to try one on. I really. I know, I just kind of hear it. Typically.
Yeah, without even turning it on. Supposed to start with a cup, real quick. Well, so these. It's not like you have to.
Let me know if they're.
I think.
Okay, I'm like. Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm worried.
Yeah, probably. Last year. Probably take this out. I heard. Yeah, yes.
Oh, it's the one down. Don't get it. So since I have a lot of.
Um.
Like a little bit of.
Um. One like. Player five, that's not what the prices are. Just. Yeah, you're not hitting there. It's supposed to be where it's really north.
It's supposed to be there.
That's not happening.
Say you have to diski.
Do you think?
No, I was proud of it.
He doesn't do this already.
I mean, I was a creator.
Jeff has to drive it back to Rogers, so.
Yeah, I got it.
You know, that's awesome, he lives in Rogers.
I was trying to.
Awesome. He lives in Rogers.
Did she wish you were here? This would be good.
Oh, sure, I just, I want to take a few, so in years, like, let me have time to read your contract.
Yeah. Are you just like.
Especially.
Yeah, it might not be that long.
Try it on. Let's see it.
Can you get the armspan a little shorter?
If it's an elastic for all the bottom. It's how you cover your belly.
Yeah. To, uh.
What? Awesome. Fifteen cents for our shirt. Oh. Mine, I gotta work through them, I gotta start shopping through this.
It is, uh. Two and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Pretty.
That's good. Get the sharpened.
Yes.
Well. And they're service or?
Really? And he's been practicing up here. We didn't. Or even, yeah.
Oh, I have a different. I did all.
Yeah.
Took us a few months.
Yeah. This is for the cellular phone? What's that? Oh, come on in. Flossing. We have shoot. So I learned from. Yeah, yes, so I'll reset. But you didn't send them off first. Yeah, they were sent out previously and it was pulled back by permission last week. I need to get a letter for that. They, oh, nothing was sent to him, so I'll resend you one. Alright, okay.
It is, uh, six o'clock, we'll call the Sartell City Council Meeting to Order for Monday, December twelfth, please rise, Pledge of Allegiance.
For allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Council, council next up is agenda review and adoption, would take a motion?
I'll make a motion approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We had no one sign up for open forum public comment. Uh, next is approval of city council minutes from November twenty eighth, regular council meeting. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Onto consent agenda, we have items A through M, I will poll C. Are there any others? Seeing none, uh, we'll look for, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through M with the exception of C. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second for items A through M with the exception of C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. Uh, item C continues to be a little bit, uh, of a moving target on that, and so with this being our last council meeting of the year, or planned one of the year, uh, simply wanted to authorize city administrator and attorney, uh, to complete this, barring no, uh, significant or substantive changes. So my motion would be, um, approve the DA and declaration of restrictions as presented tonight, subject to non-substantive revisions as approved by city admin and city attorney. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that or questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item C carries. Onto new business, resolution for street fund restrictions.
Yes, one minute as I get this set up. Good evening, mayor members of the council, just have a couple of slides that I want to present on street fund restrictions. The road infrastructure maintenance is clearly a priority of the city. Um, one of the biggest items of feedback that we do get from residents is concern over our roads and infrastructure, and many of our roads were actually built around the same timeframe, the nineteen nineties to two thousands. So since they were built twenty some plus years ago, it'll become a lot more prevalent in our budget, the street maintenance needs and, um, planning for maintaining aging infrastructure. Historically, we have taken out debt to fund these street maintenance projects, um, but going forward, there's a strong desire not to borrow. Not only will it save us money, especially in this interest rate environment, but also have a positive impact on our debt load, and we would accomplish so by increasing our levy allocation to the street fund. So since we, uh, and when we get to the levy, we'll talk more about our levy dollars to the street fund, but since we're proposing to increase our levy to the street fund, we'd also like to set restrictions on the fund to create transparency and not allow scope creep within the street fund spending. So for example, if last minute we decided that we wanted to buy a public works plow truck and we didn't have the funds in the public works fund, we couldn't tap into the street fund. Uh, very simply, the street fund revenue would be intended for street fund projects. I included the parameters in the PowerPoint and they're also included in the resolution for what we can spend street fund money on. Um, I've also reviewed the resolution with audits and they have recommended approval. So what we're looking for tonight is a motion and second to approve the resolution to restrict funding in the street fund.
Council, uh, before we ask for a motion, is there any general questions on this? Seeing none, uh, thanks, Rob. Would look for a motion on the, uh, resolution for street fund restrictions.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Old Business Resolution for Support of Casal one thirty-three.
Mayor members of the council, you can see in front of you, um, the specific area that Casal one thirty-three, uh, is intended to connect to. This is actually the original connection, um, and a map showing the original connection, um, which was originally intended to be a, to tie into the leg of the roundabout at nineteenth there. Um, Casal one thirty-three currently dead ends just after Walgreens there, um, it is a county road, it has always been a county road. Uh, but this is to complete that connection out to Sixth Street Heritage, um, or nineteenth. So as I mentioned, in front of you right now is what the original proposed route was, was the red dashed line, um, and this is from a document, um, from the original proposal, uh, back in two thousand and five, I believe it was. Um, so since then, uh, the township actually authorized the building of a business at the corner of that roundabout there. Um, with the authorization of the, of that business being built, obviously it eliminates the opportunity for the red route to go through, which would have minimized impact to property owners. Um, and, and would have been the route that would have been preferred by the county, so because that route was no longer able to be completed, this, uh, Stearns County engaged the city in a study and residents in a study to complete that connection. Um, so as a part of that process, we had a project team, which included multiple city staff, multiple township staff members or, or elected officials, uh, multiple county members and then engineers. And had multiple open houses, gathered feedback, collected data points, and from that, um, made the recommendation as a project team that it would make the most sense and we would recommend to the Stearns County Board of Commissioners that we do complete the connection, but utilize, uh, one of the other routes that you can see on the screen there. Um, in the study, it was referred to as Route C, what form that officially takes and what route that officially takes is to be determined, there'll be some wetlands to navigate, um, we'll need to navigate curves and road speeds and type of road and property owners impacted, but the, the, you know, real message out of it is that we intend to have some sort of a connection and that it would connect to Sixth Street now and not Nineteenth Avenue as originally proposed with that red line. Um, again, the exact route will be determined once surveying is done, um, and they're able to look at the, the lay of the land a little bit more closely. Um, and that will be done by Stearns County and they would begin to acquire right away as well, that would not be a city responsibility, but it will maintain this road as a county road, connecting out to Sixth, Sixth Street South, um, and continue that connection for us as a county road. Um, I laid out in your memo, you know, as how we've walked through this process and then also alternate routes that were reviewed, we did review multiple routes, um, there's major wetland issues to go just straight across there, um, and then as I mentioned, that business that's on the corner. And then another alternate route was to do nothing and to leave the dead end there and to utilize Pine Cone Road as the main thoroughfare. Um, this creates multiple challenges for the city and traffic flow in general and as well as regional traffic flow. The St. Cloud APO, uh, has consistently been working on the Beltway Project, which is to move traffic, especially truck traffic, uh, from fifteen or Highway fifteen and Highway ten, without having to take it through local roads such as, uh, Pine Cone Road. As we all saw this summer, Pine Cone Road cannot sustain, uh, the traffic flows of regional traffic consistently, and so the intent would be that traffic coming off of Highway ten and Highway fifteen, that's taking County Road twenty-nine across the bridge, down Second Street, would be able to continue through and around Sartell and not have to navigate on Pine Cone. In addition, um, this road has been planned for, uh, for several years since two thousand and four, two thousand and five. Um, and it has been a county road during that whole time and the county has received municipal, or county state aid for the road, uh, which would need to be returned if they do not maintain the connection as originally proposed. And also, we would have to turn Pine Cone Road over to the county for county road access to complete the connection, which would definitely have an impact on our ability to have access to Pine Cone Road for any future development. So there were multiple factors that the full project team, which included again the township, it included the county and it included the city, and all of us unanimously, uh, supported. it included the county and it included the city and all of us unanimously uh, supported um, in our last project team meeting that we would move forward with some sort of a connection to Sixth, Sixth Street South. I'll leave it there for any questions. I know it's a lot of information. Um, you guys, I know many of you attended the open house, so it's not entirely new information, but I wanted to make sure to provide the historical context behind this road.
Council, any questions? Tim?
Uh, just curious on scheduling and, and timing of this project.
Yeah, so we, the county has not um, necessarily put an exact timeframe on the completion of the project. They did say that it's not in their five-year plan. Um, and so it would be somewhere likely between the five and ten year. However, they can acquire right of way immediately and likely would start that process just to ensure that the right of way is acquired. Um, you know, as, as you can tell, this was two thousand four, two thousand five and nothing's happened since then. And so they want to make sure that this study stays current and that they're able to actually proceed with the project itself. So I would say in the next ten years, but it would be a county project and not a city project.
Anna, you mentioned um, the city's desire to keep Pine Cone Road as a city road. And if it were to turn into a county road, there would be some restrictions for general public's understanding. Can you just briefly outline what some of those restrictions might be?
Yeah, so one of the biggest drivers for development for a business choosing to locate on Pine Cone, which the Pine Cone roadway and, and properties adjacent to it are zoned commercial. So it would be commercial development that would go there. One of the biggest factors that developers look into is access to the property for, for people in a vehicle. And so they want full access, ideally, they want full access in and out of any of the property. Um, the county would have jurisdiction over determining that access at that point. Um, and typ- typically um, are significantly stricter than uh, the city's access points. Our, right now, we're able to leverage our city engineer to determine the access, so um, especially within a certain distance from roundabouts, which is much of Pine Cone. Um, and then being that it'd be a, a county road, it would significantly limit our ability to offer development commercially there. They would have restricted access to side streets only. Thank you.
You had mentioned about uh, these lines indicating a, a proposed route and not a final route. Has the county indicated at all and is there a priority list on what ultimately uh, makes that route? Is it right of way? Is it wetlands or what kind of takes priority first?
Yeah, good question. They did, as a part of the study, they had multiple data points that they were looking into. So things like um, ideally not having extreme curves is, is an important one. Not having major wetland impacts which are going to drive up the cost of the project. Um, speed will be another big one and we know that we heard from many residents, especially that Victory Ave neighborhood that were concerned about speed. So that will, a speed study will be a part of it and that will determine um, you know, instead, right now, I think it's proposed for a forty mile an hour road. Um, but as a part of that speed study, they would consider the route determining what that speed might be. Um, number of property owners impacted and then also how it ties into Sixth Street. So there were a couple of different examples of how they would tie it in. Um, and so that will be an important factor going forward as well. So they had a um, as a part of the study, they had a matrix of different factors that they'd be quantifying through it and once they would do the survey part and actually understand the um, the topo for the property, that's when they'd be able to really analyze that a little bit further.
Council, I think the, the biggest takeaway on this for me is, is that uh, as Anna spoke about, there was a study, uh, this red line was indicated to property owners in the early two thousands that there would be a road going through here. This connection would happen. Um, and just recently, as they began updating the study, uh, I feel like that narrative has been incorrect in the public eye of now they want to put a road through. I never knew a road was going to happen here. Um, there's documentation that this was planned. This was a very public process back in the early two thousands. Unfortunately, uh, right of way by the county wasn't acquired. And so now we're left here um, in a somewhat redesigning. It also allowed, to Anna's point, the township had allowed uh, commercial development to occur where a road was planned for. And so I'm hopeful that this round of study will put forth a, a plan which they acquire right of way and restrict the build out uh, specific to that property so that they can then in the near future, whether that be five, ten years, able to get a road in and move forward on the process. So that's how, I guess I would um, summarize that is there's a resolution we're being asked to support uh, for either the purple or, or yellow lines. Uh, the red line indicates a previous plan. Is that accurate?
Yep, um, and just to add to that, uh, this document is specifically from the construction and right of way acquisition of the roundabout that was built. And so this is from plan documents from two, two thousand four, two thousand five from Stearns County themselves. So um, the red route was not reviewed in this study because obviously it's not a reality going forward. Um, this was specifically provided to us from the county engineer, Jody Tyke, uh, as a part of plan documents when the roundabout was constructed.
Yeah, this map is simply a reference from early two thousand study.
Absolutely.
The new route that's being proposed that we're support, we're being asked to support tonight uh, has a few more curves into it to uh, navigate through some of the properties.
Yep, and city staff will be attending the Stearns County Board of Commissioners meeting tomorrow morning. Uh, we're on the agenda for about ten AM uh, to present uh, the city council stance on this and, and partner, really look at this as a partnership opportunity with the county in completing a, a really valuable and important connection for traffic in our whole region, not just Sartell.
So who actually makes the final decision then? That is a county decision?
Yeah, it will be, it's a Stearns County Road, Stearns County project. They will lead the project and Stearns County Board of Commissioners will make the final decision.
So we just, we just give our input and then they'll decide what they
Yeah, we will encourage our um, you know, our support via this resolution. But I did also attend uh, the county board meeting in October where they joined the project team in the project team analysis. So at that time, the project team brought forward um, our suggestion of C and they supported that suggestion and then it went to the public open house. And so the county is aware of our stance from that viewpoint and then the resolution just solidifies the council's support.
Council, would look for a motion on the resolution of support for Cassau one thirty-three.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Of a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have three public hearings tonight. The first is the two thousand twenty-three final budget and levy hearing.
Yes, before we open it up for public comments, questions, I thought I'd provide a little bit of context on what we're proposing for a twenty twenty-three budget and levy. So if we jump right into the tax levy, in two thousand twenty-two, we certified seven point eight million. Twenty twenty-three, we're proposing nine point two million. So an increase of one point three five million or seventeen point seventeen percent increase to the levy. When you break that down, eight point five four percent increase to the general fund, uh, which is actually in line with the rate of inflation and the lowest increase we've had in the past few years. I thought department heads were very diligent about budgeting conservatively and we also have some help from not holding any elections in two thousand twenty-three and a little bit of help from the state and local government aid. Capital funds increasing four hundred forty-nine thousand, um, which is pretty substantial uh, because we do have a few larger street maintenance projects scheduled for two thousand twenty-three that we didn't have in two thousand twenty-two. Um, and we'd like to pay cash for those maintenance projects instead of issuing debt, especially in this rate environment. Uh, street fund restrictions were just approved and those additional funds that we're adding to the street fund are designated solely for street projects. And then debt service funds increasing as well. We were able to tap into our reserves in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two to help our levy. Uh, we don't have that luxury in two thousand twenty-three, so we are funding these appropriately to make our debt service payments in two thousand twenty-three. This is a breakout of the revenue and expenditures in the general fund. When you look at revenue on the left-hand side, property taxes make up three quarters of our revenue. And when you look at expenditures in the bottom category, salaries and expenditure, salaries and employer paid benefits, uh, most of which dictated by bargaining agreements, make up nearly seventy percent of our expenditures. Um, when you look at that chart above, over fifty percent of those expenditures are made in public safety. So including police, fire, building and inspections, uh, and emergency management. Uh, proposed net tax capacity, or you could also think of this as tax base, which comes from both Stearns and Benton County. In two thousand twenty-two, our tax base or tax capacity increase was six point one six percent, which is around average when you look at two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. But in two thousand twenty-three, we have an increase of seventeen point five percent. Um, very simply described by the assessor, uh, who determines tax base as an extraordinary increase in residential property values fueled by, of course, low supply and low interest rates. In Sartell, residential homesteads make up over sixty percent of our tax base, which propelled a large tax capacity increase uh, in Sartell. Um, over eighty-five percent of the increase from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three was market value growth on existing homes and businesses and less than fifteen percent of the increase was from new construction. So when you look at our proposed tax levy on the first slide and divide that by our proposed tax capacity from the county, you get to forty-one point four nine three percent, which is actually a slight decrease um, from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. Uh, the tax rate is applied to market value on a home or business to help determine what that home or business would owe to the city and city property taxes. It's not a slight decrease now, but I'm anticipating tax growth or tax capacity to increase slightly because it's not final until February and the county is still accepting applications for homesteads and other property tax exemptions. So what that means for Sartell residents, if a resident had a three hundred thousand dollar home in two thousand twenty-two and didn't see an increase in estimated market value, which is unlikely, um, but could happen, their property taxes, um, their city property taxes would actually decrease very slightly. Because our tax rate is decreasing slightly from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. But if they're seeing the typical change in property value, uh, and some data provided by Stearns County showed that an average residential homestead is seeing a twenty-one point oh eight percent increase. That three hundred thousand dollar home in two thousand twenty-two is now a three hundred sixty-three thousand dollar home in two thousand twenty-three. Thus, their city property taxes are increasing two hundred eighty-two dollars. Um, of course, that's propelled by increase in market value, not in the city tax rate. When you look at tax rate overall for Sartell residents, uh, these are for Sartell residents in Sartell School District, uh, also in Stearns County. Um, as you know, we're also in Benton County and we serve two other school districts. This represents the majority parcels in Sartell. In two thousand nineteen, uh, it was a total tax rate which includes the county school district, our city tax rates and other of a hundred forty-two percent, twenty twenty, a hundred thirty-six percent, twenty twenty-one, a hundred thirty-two percent, twenty twenty-two, a hundred thirty-one percent, and then twenty twenty-three coming down to a hundred nineteen percent. And that's actually worst case uh, scenario because that's based on preliminary levies from these entities. Uh, so it could potentially go down even further. So even though market rate and market values are increasing, it should offset a little bit by decreasing overall tax rate in two thousand twenty-three. This is how our tax rate compares to other area cities. Sartell is the dark blue line on the bottom, uh, representing the lowest tax rate most years. Um, and you also notice that it's a very steady horizontal line, um, indicating that our levy is growing in parallel with our tax capacity or tax base growth. So as our tax capacity determined by the county is increasing, our levy is increasing in parallel, um, indicating that nice horizontal line. Some additional information, if property tax or property taxpayers are looking for relief, um, relief through the state, uh, the Department of Revenue, a number and website there. So the next steps would be to open up the public comment for budget levy, adopt the budget and then the levy, both collectible in two thousand twenty-three.
Thanks, Rob. Uh, council, before I open up the public hearing, are there any questions for staff? Jeff?
Um, I just want to say, you know, thank you to Rob. I know it's somewhat confusing if you don't do this all day, every day, but you know, it's, as a city, the best thing we can do is try to keep our tax rate level or decrease slightly. Um, unfortunately, as everything around us, the cost has gone up tremendously uh, this year. So, um, including homeowners' uh, appreciation value. Um, as they're realizing a higher value in their homes, up to sixteen percent, it looks like, um, it, it's, it does cost more in taxes, but the tax rate we can control, the uh, the actual tax capacity or the value of your home, we can't control, the market controls that, so. Nice job, Rob.
We will uh, go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the two thousand twenty-three final budget and levy hearing, please step to the podium. Second call, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Third and final option, anyone wishing to testify on the two thousand twenty-three final budget and levy? We will close the public hearing. Council, any additional questions, comments? Um, couple that I would make, uh, for me, I think number one is, uh, I'm, I'm extremely happy that we are increasing in a significant way, I believe it was, um, right here on the screen, two hundred fifty-two percent increase into our street fund. Uh, that is a chief complaint that we get from, or that I, I've heard from residents is, what about the street in front of my house? Um, and we are positioning ourselves and future councils in a spot where we'll be able to fund some of those or more of those and start taking care of that uh, versus letting it deteriorate and get to a point where we have to do a full reconstruct. So I think that's money well spent. Second part is, um, one of our largest increases is going to wages um, for city staff and, and we know personnel costs uh, have continued to climb throughout this year. And um, we've got some of the best staff around, so happy that we're able to um, retain those, attract new ones and support our community. One item of note that uh, Rob and I had a conversation earlier today on is elections. Elections have historically been a, every other year, target for us budget-wise. Um, we know they're going to happen every two years with no doubt. I can guarantee they're going to happen. And so Rob and I were talking in the future, would it make sense for us to uh, do a fifty percent election cost every year just to try and neutralize that moving forward? Um, that seems to be, this year, we're talking about that being a decrease, next year it's gonna, or uh, this next year it's going to be a decrease, the following year it's going to be an increase again and somehow level that out so it uh, neutralizes itself. Something we can look at it for two thousand twenty-four. That is all I have. I would look for a motion to approve the budget and levy. We have a motion, is there a second? Jeff will second.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Um, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the levy carries. Next public hearing is on the preliminary and final plat for Watab Creek.
Rob, can you pull up the first slide?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the council, before you
Mayor and members of the council, before you is the location for the preliminary and final plat of Watab Creek. Planning Commission approved this on December fifth, just last week. The preliminary plat, Rob, you can go to the next one, please. The preliminary and final plat consists of two single-family residential lots located off of First Street North and Nineteenth that you saw previously. The plat consists of two lots, one being three point two nine acres and the other lot being two point three four acres, just over six acres between the two. Some notes of discussion on this plat consist of that it's not subject to any storm or water or sanitary trunk fees as there's no current city services in this area. This development will be subject to the park dedication fees, which is based on our nine seventy-eight per lot in our fee schedule, so two total fees there. And that's pretty standard practice on any new residential or commercial developments in this case. As you can see on lot one, there is currently a standalone pole shed, which is not allowed in our current zoning code, but with some discussions with the property owners and the surveyor, it's not feasible to make the property owner tear down a pole shed to build a house and just to rebuild the pole shed. So what we're proposing is that they would have to follow our non-conforming code or state statute. That just makes the intention of it to permit the non-conforming use to remain, but not encourage their survival. So they can do maintenance, regular maintenance that would be required, but if they would pull a building permit to now make that pole shed into a living quarters or anything like that, that wouldn't be allowed. So they do have plans to build another single-family house on that lot in the future, hence why they would leave the pole shed and it would come in back into and meet our zoning code currently. Besides that, all other zoning requirements have been met. They are outside the delineated wetland, the FEMA regulations off of the creek, and all other zoning standards have been met.
Counsel, any questions? Specific, specific to the non-conforming, you mentioned once they build a house, it would be conforming. Is it non-conforming because it's a standalone lot with a shed?
Correct. Our current zoning code would not allow an accessory building on a residential lot alone.
Without a primary.
Without a primary structure. So with some conversations, there is intention to build a house, as you can see there, and they have located septic sites for this residence to be built, so there is adequate means to meet those zoning standards.
And once it, once a house is built, the structure will meet code? Or it would stay a non-conforming because it doesn't meet code?
It would, it would meet the code.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, any other questions before we open up the public hearing?
Just to confirm, the, the building pad is drawn. The pole shed would meet code even with the building pad as drawn?
Correct.
Okay.
Seeing no other questions, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the preliminary and final plat for Watab Creek, please step forward. Second offer, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Third and final, anyone wishing to testify on the preliminary and final plat for Watab Creek? We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, further questions? Seeing none, we'd look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve preliminary and final plat. Any further discussion? One quick one would be any comments from Planning Commission?
They had some, I, I wasn't there, but it was relayed to me that they had some questions of the non-conforming use, and it was explained that in order to meet the development needs of the property owners and to make it responsible fiscally to meet that, that they understood and that the non-conforming code and state statute is enough to protect the city from anything that may come in if there was other intentions.
Okay.
But they had no other questions or comments on that.
Thank you.
I have one follow-up, sorry. They could move that potential building pad further back in the site as long as it conforms to the setbacks on the water, correct?
Correct.
All right, we will have a motion and a second. No further questions, call the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. The third and final public hearing is on the rezone for Sartell Street West.
Mayor and members of the council, before you is a location of a property for, that was requested for a rezone. It is currently zoned as B to our general business district, and that location in the red there, it is off of Sartell Street West and Fourth Ave. This was brought to Planning Commission, I should go back. The original request was to re- rezone this to our R two, single and multifamily residential. As proposed, this was brought to Planning Commission. Planning Commission denied the initial request for the R two, single multifamily residential. But after some discussions with the property owner and Planning Commission, staff worked with the property owner to amend the zoning request for R one, single-family residential at the request of the property owner and with discussion with Planning Commission. The plans that we have seen for this are for a single-family residential home to be constructed on that lot. This, it, it's, this lot is difficult. There is bluffs, there, there's significant drop in elevation. So to have it zoned B to our general business district would not be, there, there would be a very small building space on this lot. So for the rezone to a R one, single-family residential, it makes this lot developable for the landowner and for the city. Otherwise, this lot would sit there, and in the past, it has just sat there due to some issues with how the land is on the parcel. With talking with the property owner, we've seen plans for the residence to be constructed and due to the wetland setbacks and bluff setbacks that are on this property that you see, there would require most likely a variance in the future to accommodate that development. And this is within our ESA or our environmentally sensitive area so that when that variance request would be submitted, we would hold an ESA meeting to ensure that we are protecting our natural habitat and resources in that area, but still allowing this to be a developable piece of property. And with that being said, I, I'll take any questions. I know the property owner is here, if there's any direct questions to him that he can respond fully to. As a note, we have seen general plans of the house being proposed, but as of right now, this is just to rezone for R one as we are proposing from staff and Planning Commission.
Counsel, before we open up the final public hearing tonight, any questions?
I, just real quick comment on it. I've seen that property on, on MLS for quite a while, and I was kind of wondering what was wrong with it, why it wasn't being built on. So I think whatever we can do to help out would probably be a good thing tonight.
Yes, and the, the, the property is, it's really nice back there, and to have a single-family home, I think that would be the best use of this space and keep that area to a single-family. As you can see back there in the yellow, it's mainly surrounded by a single-family with the odd property to the left, which is actually a single-family home as well, but it is zoned B two.
Is the front parcel that an easement, the dark portion of that?
So that is, it, it is oddly shown here with that zero. If you look at Stearns Beacon or our Stearns County website, it does show that within our city right away. So there would be access for the driveway and things like that from this property or from, for the parcel.
So it could go through, the, the, access to the site would be somewhere in that darker or zero point, not just the pink right next to the existing house?
Correct, it could be anywhere in that area since it is public.
Okay.
It looks like the neighbor's driveway is going through there right now.
Correct.
All right, let's open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the rezone for Sartell Street West, please step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to testify on the rezone for Sartell Street West? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the rezone for Sartell Street West? We will close the public hearing. Counsel, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, would look for a motion on the rezone.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve the rezone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto department reports, first up is PD.
Mayor members of the council, you have the police department's monthly report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for PD? Thank you, sir. Fire?
Mayor, members of council, in front of you, you have monthly report for fire. One area of highlight is we finally finished up our promotional process. That's been a big project in the background in the works. Adding in the new lieutenant's positions will be a great step for the department. The first intermediate step into the officer level to help some training. Other than that, just want to thank Councilmember Colb for his service. Appreciate your support of public safety throughout your time here. Any questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions for fire? Thank you. Engineering, Public Works.
Mayor, members of the council, you have our report. Any questions, be happy to answer.
Any questions for Public Works? Jill?
How's the new skating rink going on over there in Pinecone Park?
It's going okay. The last few days have not helped us, but it looks like the future will be better next week.
Like tomorrow's not going to be any better help?
No, so, but we've never opened a rink until, you know, I've, I've got dates back to, you know, December twenty-third, twenty-fourth. You know, that's usually when we open our rink, so we get some cold weather, it'll, it'll come around fast.
Okay, good. Any other prodding questions for Public Works? Final one of the year to get in if you can.
And Jeff, I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Jeff, I appreciate it.
Way to get in front of that one. Community Development.
Mayor and members of the council, you have my monthly, our monthly report in your packet. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions for Community Development? Thank you. Finance.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my report as well. Just a couple of things of notes, through November, with one month left in the year, I think we're right on track to finish at least balanced in our general fund, and sales tax continues to trend positively throughout the first eight months of two thousand and twenty-two. If you have any additional questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions for Rob? Thank you. Administration.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my report. You will notice multiple ninety-five percent done. We expect many of these to be wrapped up, mostly technology-related. Many of these to be wrapped up by the end of the year, or for sure by the first meeting in January, with multiple big reveals coming, so we're excited about that. And of course, hopeful that we will lead to closure on the AIM properties in the near future too. So hopefully this list is much shorter for our next monthly report.
The next one will start over in, in January.
Correct. Fully anticipate that.
Thank you, any questions for Administration? Thanks. City Commission updates, any to offer?
No updates at this time.
City Council Committee updates. Miscellaneous business, Tim?
I'd just like to wish Jeff good luck in his adventure after serving the last four years with us, or myself and Ryan, I guess, in two years with the other two. I'm not sure who's the smarter of the two between us on continuing the journey and you going. But it's been a pleasure, and I really appreciate the time and, and your thought, and we'll miss that.
Appreciate it, thank you, Tim.
Jill?
Same, I just want to thank Jeff for his service and wish you best of luck and appreciated your perspective and learning from you over the past couple of years.
Thanks, Jeff.
And I'm going to jump in so that we can end with Jeff tonight. Like both Tim and Jill spoke and, and department heads as well, it's been, been great to get to know you. You've been a great steward of the, from a finance perspective on the council, always pushing and, and challenging, not only our council but staff, to think of alternatives to raising taxes or, or impacting that. So I very much appreciate that, have learned a lot from you on that, and it's been great to get to know you.
Thank you. You as well.
Alex?
Yes, thank you, Jeffrey, thank you, Don. You've been a great mentor for myself on the council, so I appreciate that. And also this Friday, Santa's helpers will be at the Festival of Lights doing a Fill the Truck. So we welcome everyone to come and bring a toy to be donated to kids that will be in the hospital this Christmas. And then you can also have a smore with firefighters, so encourage everyone to come out.
All right, floor is yours.
Just want to take a minute to thank the citizens of Sartell for the opportunity to serve them over the last four years. I still can't believe it's been four years already, seemed like just a couple of weeks ago we started, right, and Tim? What a wonderful community we have here. I'd also like to thank the department heads. You're some of the most professional and hardworking people that I've had an opportunity to work with. And, you know, I've worked in, as a council member, in two different cities, and just, it's really fun to see how a city, we have similarities, but a lot of differences as well, and very well-run. I was going to say thank you to Jim, but he, he wasn't here today, so Wayne, thank you, and good luck to you in the, in the future on the department. Hopefully our plans continue forward. Peter, it's been a pleasure working with you, and you, you've been a great person that stepped into that role, a new, as a new fire chief. We did the same in the city by Sandy when we were there, and it, it really turned out to be a great opportunity. So good luck to you. Rob, same as you, you know, same with you. It's great to see somebody from our community grow up and go through their education, get some experience, and come back to serve their community. Beetle, you're one of the best out there. It's been a fun working with you. The city would not be the same without you. So thank you so much. And Scott, I was going to thank Scott, but he is not here tonight, so. Anna, you're one of the best, one of the most professional and energetic people I've had, ever had the opportunity to work with. I've got, had the ability to work under a couple of different city administrators, so thank you so much for all you do. The city's lucky to have you as our leader. It's been a pleasure working with you and, and your staff over these last four years. It's just tremendous to see how everybody works together in the city. And if something needs to get done, they just jump and do it. To my fellow council members, it's been great serving with you over the last two to four years. Tim and Ryan, I can't believe it's been four years already, but it's been absolute pleasure working with you guys. And then Jill and, and Alex here the last two years. We've had many challenges over the last four years, and we've had a lot of growth in the city and a lot of accomplishments of our goals, which was really great achievement. So we don't always see the same side of every issue, but- So we don't always see the same side of every issue, but that's okay. And that's what democracy is all about, so thank you, guys. In leaving, my recommendation to the council is to keep working to, to get our debt to a manageable amount. As I've said many times, I think we need to get that down a little bit. This will allow us to work better within our budget and get a better credit rating, which will allow us to borrow money at a, at a lower rate in the long run. Don't rubber stamp everything. It's okay to debate, to, to discuss and disagree on issues. That's what, that's what we're here for. Lead with compassion and try to see the issues from all sides. Keep working together to keep our city the gem of a community that it is. And again, thank you to the city of Sartell for giving me this opportunity. Good luck to you guys.
Well said, very well said. We'll look for a motion to your honor.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, we're adjourned.
Good luck, Jeff.